I was gonna ask, Kim, Anna, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna ask for a little bit of patience. We had hoped to have a facilitator. We don't, and yet I think that we have a recommendation that will move us a step forward, but not to the end point, and I think that's okay tonight. And I'm gonna speak and then, Kim, I'm gonna put you on the spot and just actually ask you to kind of check what I'm thinking. What I think we know is that we've got tons of community feedback, and the feedback informed the goals and guardrails. And in some respects, the goals and guardrails serve as a pathway to our vision and our mission. And so what we're trying to do tonight is, at a high level, summarize what we've heard and aspirationally outline based on community feedback, based on what's reflected in our goals and guardrails and what we heard as values, put that into some type of an aspirational statement. So we're not coming up with new things. We're using what we've already heard from our community listening sessions.
That's good.
Okay, so as we started to think about this, we can take two approaches. We can do a very traditional strategic planning approach, which is go all the way to the beginning about, and Dr. Roberts has his amazing handouts on how to start, right, kind of from the beginning. Or we can maybe try to accelerate our work a little bit. And one of the ideas that we had was, what if we actually just put some words on paper as sample vision statements? And all of you looked at it, and all of us looked at it, and basically circled words or themes that resonated with us, right? And again, this is, nobody owns the sample vision statement as much as we put words on paper based on what we heard.
Can you speak to the process that got us to this piece of paper?
It's a great question. It was a combination of me, a little bit of Dr. Roberts, and quite honestly infusing the reimagining education language that we're hearing from the committee. So I'm going to say that this is a very crude approach. What I think it is attempting to do is use a lot of the values, goals, guardrails, a lot of the words and sentiment that we heard. So it is crude. Is that fair?
Thank you.
This is just the two of you brainstorming with all of that data and...
Yes, and so consider this a reaction document. And, you know, I would look at this, and I think we have like, maybe we actually have key modified delete, right? Or, like, what words do you love, right? Like, what are the words that when you look here, I don't know, I'm gonna be dispositions even though I don't, right? But like, oh, I love that word dispositions, like, we need to keep that. Or, oh, you talked about, you know, rapidly evolving world. No, I don't, I don't like that. Like, I think we're just trying to get some gut sentiments on what jumps out at you. Because honestly, the thing that still has to happen is there's alignment with the conversation that is happening with strategic planning, with reimagining education, and this work where the board is driving it, but we're trying to use a lot of the same words, like we've heard about transforming education as an example. And so I guess I'm gonna ask us to just sausage make a little bit. And, because there's no intent to to drive anybody in a certain direction. I think the intent is just to get some early feedback. As a reminder, and I shared an earlier document with you, there's a lot of stuff on our website, right? So I shared with you our educational principles, our model for urban education, like, there's a lot of stuff there. So our goal is to get to a point where we have an aspirational, right? And that's success tonight is aspirational. So Dr. Roberts, do you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you. And so as you think about the vision of the organization, right? Anyone knows and remembers our current vision for the MBS?
Becoming the model for urban education.
Say it again, say it again. I'm kidding.
No, we've...
Say it again.
And so, is it fair then to suggest that we believe that this is the right time, based on the body of work we're doing, based on the community feedback around how we express and share these beliefs, that this is the right time for us to revisit a new vision for the MBS? With that said,
Can you hear?
organizations that embark upon the main vision, key strategies, work, in this case, like we talked about vision. The vision again is what? Is our North Star, right? What do we aspire to become? Where do we wanna go? And thinking about, is it possible? Some key takeaways when you think about visioning and creating vision statements. One, it should be memorable. It should be easily accessible for any person who the vision will impact. And so in this case, we're thinking about all of our stakeholders. The board, though, has this responsibility in collaboration with the student center to create the vision for the more public schools for the foreseeable future. We don't wanna give ourselves a very specific timeline, five years, 10 years, because the vision is about a futuristic thought, so you're thinking, keep it big picture. What is the foreseeable future? Or where do we wanna go? Where's our North Star gonna take us? Pause for any reactions. One minute's approach is work, and Jackie and I collaborated around looking at some possibilities, not even close and exhaustive, but what's more important for tonight's activities is for us to think about, what are some words that each of us, just off the top of our head, believe will be really powerful and transformative for our vision as we think about, what do you envision for the more public schools?
So you can use this, or you can come through.
Right. Yes.
Before we dive into that, can I just ask some questions about process? So we're going to kind of very high level begin to re-imagine tonight. What is our goal for when we will have a vision statement ready to go, completed? What is it?
Yeah, it's a great question. So part of what was referenced is, we have to add a virtual board maybe next week to approve a few items. One of them includes a strategic communications company that is going to begin working with all of us as we start thinking about reimagining education and just all of the pieces that are involved in what that is. And part of that is asking them to guide us.
Can we, thank you.
You are so amazing.
Thank you.
We wanna do is, you wanna give the thing that really matters to us, and we wanna give it to the education's team to work with them a little bit, and then come back. And do this, do you compare?
Is that the right, no.
It is, there is a...
Finalists, Rinsin and Cecil. Oh, got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for helping. Our hope that we're done at the... Yeah.
No, so our hope is that we're handing something over after next week to a company yet to be determined to assist us, and then they will come back.
You can pass them around. He said.
That work?
And a part of this tonight is, as a team, right, we can land on a narrow length of words that we want to see in what we envision in more public schools.
Yep, so here we go. I'm just gonna go popcorn. Who wants to go first?
Can I ask you a question? Are you looking for something as short as like Nike's? Nike's vision statement is to bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete in the world.
That's not your job.
I know, but are you looking for something that's short, or are you looking for, are you just looking for words and we'll decide how?
Yep, just looking for words, phrases, intent.
I like empower.
Empower.
I like, well, it's three words together, though. Are we just always supposed to do the ones?
Words and phrases.
Words, or what you were thinking about?
No. I...
You want me to take notes?
Um, why don't I take notes?
Yeah.
And you?
Oh, my boy.
Okay, keep going, guys. Transform the future.
Thank you.
Does Anna have this document? Does Anna have this document?
I think so.
Does she?
I have something from an email that you sent.
No, this is new, isn't it?
Okay, I'm gonna send, I can't hold my class. Will you just jot down some notes while I'm sending this?
Words, what words?
Cultivating a global society.
Like dynamic learning.
As a hint, remember, as we think about our next vision, we wanna think, what does it mean for us to reimagine education in more public schools?
Like, long-term, favorite.
Me too, amen. What are you saying? Delete.
What he said, though.
Every suggestion is a good one, even if it's a sixties.
That's right.
Put his name next to that till we remember.
Anna, just sent it to you.
I would say, thanks, Derek. Maybe you've been ready? Full potential, I think.
What are you adding there, Dr. Roberts?
Urban education, just in case someone still hasn't.
Put his name next to that one. There's gas in my drone.
You know that contract that we...
I am also that, you know, you've been part of these conversations, and so if you have things that you'd like to throw up there as well, I just wanna... I like the kind of prepared for the world and like the global prepared future, ever-changing world, something...
The only reason I like transform versus prepare is transform is like impact, right? It's like you're gonna do something, versus prepare is like, okay, I studied, I... But it's transform is like the outcome, right? Like you, I don't know. To me, that's a more powerful, like, I think that's kind of a...
Sounds more intentional.
Yeah, I mean, as you think about, like, I always think about these podcasts that I listen to where they say like 20 years from now, we don't even know what the career, what the jobs are, but there's this preparation for everything.
Not knowing.
So maybe it's not prepared, but it is like...
Educate.
They're gonna make the readiness a...
Educating for an ever-changing world.
We don't have community in here at all, and I just feel like maybe that should go up there somehow. And I don't, maybe that's not the future of the more public schools' vision, but I do feel like it's been a big part of our path.
So I do wanna call out, and this is not related to what Sarah just said, but just as a reminder, so we've got the vision and then the mission, right? And so the vision is kind of the aspiration, right? The, and then the mission is a little bit more of your how, like, how are we gonna do it? And so I'm not saying that that is relevant to community, but just a reminder, because if there are things that are coming up that we wanna throw up on the mission side, make sure that no throws it wrong.
I think the board uses the word excellence a lot.
I like that.
We've heard that from our community a lot.
This may be controversial, but I would say the word I would probably remove from there is graduate.
Agreed.
I think education is so much more than graduating.
You can pause and then get some reactions.
It's, so is it graduate or is it graduate? Are we referring to a graduate or to, right?
Yeah, in this case, I think it can be both, the noun or verb. What do you, Scotty, what do you think about this? What do you think? The verb, do not, right? Or no?
I'm talking on the verb.
The verb, yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I, I am having to see. Say more.
If you use it as a noun, I think it's okay.
Say more about why you're, why you're tripping on that word. And I, you know, like, I think I get a little bit of it, but I wanna hear, I wanna hear more. Yeah, I guess when you build a vision statement that's aspirational, and when you have the set up the goals, the process in there is incented differently. DMPS can have 100% graduation if they wanted to, that may be lowering curriculum, a lot of things. So seeing mindful of what we actually want students to have in the future. And I don't know if it's them being a graduate, or them having the skills to be prepared for life, or future-ready, or transformed, whatever. Yeah.
Can I just make another observation?
Yes.
Just as we did talk about, our prior vision statement was focused more on like, I guess, us and the system we wanted to build. And a lot of what I read in the examples and words, we're thinking more about like what we want our students to know and be able to do, or who we want our students to become. And I guess I'm just thinking about those different kinds of frames of thought.
So if you were to take that, who do we want our students to become? And go back, like, look at that list now, like, that frame, who do we want our students to become, or something like that? What punches through for you?
And I feel like we need to add, like, and like, this is lame, but like a good person or something, right? Like, I don't know, like a...
Character?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, maybe that's not the right, but I do feel like there's some...
So it's interesting.
Character.
This, all students will graduate, skills and dispositions. Now, again, dispositions is not a word that makes any sense to people, but it is acknowledging that it's, it is more than just skills. An ambitious person, a confident person.
Empowering, do we have that up there?
Empowering's up there. And empowered.
And I think that we should be looking more as a system rather than just as a student. DMPS as a system is more than just our students. It is it is the backwards of our community. It is, it is about creating opportunities, not just for students, but for our our city and our city's livelihood and...
Our staff.
I would rather have a vision statement that is higher level than just... Our mission be more about, our mission is about our students. Our vision should be...
The mission, that's a process point. One thing to keep in mind is that when we were doing the vision creation work, the vision should be aspirational. It should be that sort of example of things beyond our wildest dreams. Should really be aspirational. So, Kim, I'm hearing where you're going. It should be so much more than just our students. It should be bigger. As I'm looking at your body language, it should be so big because it's going to impact our community, our city.
Our global society.
Global society.
Yeah, it's funny, because then I think about what you just said, and to me, the best way to contribute is to better than graduate. But graduate students that are adaptable, prepared to compete in a global society, ever-changing world, like, so, and then, you can go either, what, like?
Yeah, and I, the, the words that are ringing in my head right now, and I'm gonna refer them at, because you do it with such passion when we present on the importance of pre-K and the impact that it has, something, you know, the impact that pre-K has on on our entire city, on the lives of the individuals that, that we touch. And we think about all those different data points of that impact. It is about so much more than just a student graduating.
And so when you use, like, I guess, pre-K as an example, I think of pre-K being a transcendent, in-depth idea. With the idea that it's not just about pre-K, it's about access and opportunities to surpass the expectation, the everyday norm.
Yeah.
I guess if I were to offer something transcendence or transcendent, yes.
No, I...
Part of the process.
Yeah.
Actually, while to spend no more than three minutes, I'll tell you, taking a look, two things, at the vision statements, topics that are here, and utilizing, if you see something that jumps out at you, looking at words from the board from our brain dump, and think about, what would you wanna add to a particular statement to strengthen it, if any? Clear?
On the vision ideas, the bullets?
Using the bullet, the vision bullets we have here. You have an extra one, my left. And then if something, if one of those statements resonates with you, would you like to offer it up, but wanted to add one, two, or three of these words in that statement that will strengthen it? One minute.
Teacher votes come along in the middle. I thought you both were teachers. So it's a lot of sense.
Anyone can just pop one out. Do you have a vision statement that jumps out at you, and did you add anything, if you could read it out to me? I think Jackie's capturing it, and I'll just put it in the board for the benefit of all.
Educating and empowering our students to trans- trust, transcend, transcend in a global society.
Say it again.
Educating and empowering our students to transcend in a global society.
Our students will reach excellence and transform the future. Or will model excellence. I don't know, I correct shows those words a lot, but something with excellence and transform the future.
Let's see, what is it?
Our students will model excellence and transform the future.
Mine was...
That's a sus- then up.
What?
We're counting.
Um, mine was granting all students how did I rewrite it? So granting all students the ability to thrive in a constant changing world. Or evolus- of a, evol-
To evolve?
Yeah.
A evolving world, changing world.
Evolving world, changing world.
I like thrive, though.
Thrive sounds powerful.
Thrive and transform.
Yeah, I went full marketing agency in this one. Empowering students to realize their fullest potential by harnessing their passion and aspiring to excellence in the service of our community, state, and world.
Just like just do it. Good job.
Give it to me again, please.
Why I used one word? Empowering students to realize their full potential by harnessing their passion and aspiring to excellence in the service of our community. I would stop at Q, but...
By harnessing their passion.
And aspiring to excellence in the service of our community.
It's nice part, in service to community.
Transforming the future of Des Moines.
I was wondering if that's where we're going, when you talked about... No, but I was wondering, Kim, when you said, like, I was wondering if you were thinking about Des Moines or Iowa or...
I just think that we're, we're kind of on the line of writing mission statements, right? We're covering more as a mission than we are a vision.
Can you give yours to me while I'm...
Transforming the future of Des Moines.
And yet, when you look at these, some of these vision statements, I mean, what I would say is, in some of the research, the way people, the way school boards have chosen to define vision versus mission is actually kind of fascinating, because it's not always right.
So were these...
Some of these are sample, some of these are sample vision statements.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you wrote all these, yeah.
Gosh, I wish I was that smart.
I wrote a couple.
I'm glad you didn't. Oh, yeah, no, you can critique these away. Some of these I pulled from some of the reimagining, some of the board listening sessions.
Samantha has been able to join the meeting. Is she in?
She's in, okay.
Yeah.
Is that yours, Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. Just read it out loud. Students.
Empowering all students to succeed and thrive in an ever-changing world.
Empower students for global impact.
Ooh, I like that.
Empowering students for global impact and local something. Empowering students for global impact and local something. Like.
Is that to face global impact or to make a global impact?
What was your question?
About empowering students for global impact, is that creating global impact, like empowering students to create global impact? Or empowering students to face global impact? I'm just thinking of it. By facing it, like when you face something.
I'm sorry.
Flip-flop is.
I'm trying to get to it like empowering students, I like your insert, like. We basically want to say, we want you to transform the future of Des Moines or something, Iowa, Des Moines. But. We also want the global, I don't know.
You can have local excellence and be, and have global impact. Our local excellence can have global.
I don't know, maybe. Our students for global impact.
But I don't know how you, yeah.
Who has not shared yet, Rosie, have any thoughts?
I know, I was saying, paying attention.
I've, I've been revising mine a few times.
Okay, that's all good.
Getting taken and stuff, um, but I had to empower all students to succeed in an ever-changing world while maximizing their full potential.
Can I share one more that's kind of more along the Kim line? Can we just make sure we have that one? To empower all students to succeed in an ever-changing world while maximizing their full potential?
Can you share it from one?
So it's like, I had another, like a community one today. Just had this teacher moment of. This whiteboard has already been cleaned for the summer.
Yeah. Um, empowering our community to reach excellence.
So do you want to remove your first one?
No, can I just have two or no?
You're pushing.
That's my Des Moines Public Schools education, pushing the boundary, transforming the future.
Empowering our community to reach excellence.
Something you could put on a T-shirt.
Ken, why don't you guys reread Kim's?
It is transforming the future of Des Moines.
Do you like it?
I already won't let you, by the way.
Well, no, 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 because my thought is like. I like Kim's because we want them to thrive and every, and stay in Des Moines, like we need people to stay in Des Moines.
No, they're trying to get deported right now. In Iowa.
And get the community. So it's like generational and generational, because a lot of these students will be our teachers in the future, so something that will tie into. More community, more Des Moines.
So I'm going to give mine, because I haven't given mine yet, um, and it's going to be awful, but that's okay. Um, something like empowering students. Here are the concepts, in service to our local community. But. Transforming. Going to stop there, not, I'm not, I'm not feeling it. I just want both.
I really like the word thrive, whichever one had thrive, it's, it's a good one.
As a process, process point, let me just offer that, what are we going to look at next? As we brainstorm, we want to be able to capture and highlight, what are some of the recurring words? Because it speaks to the values that we have as a board.
So is that where we're going next? Has everybody felt like they've gone?
Yeah.
Then you want to go twice? Okay, what was the first most frequent word?
One, two.
Empower.
Five. Six.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
I already said quite a bit.
To.
Good.
Decide before we go there, I mean, whether or not we're.
Excellence is there too, Dr. Roberts.
Again?
Excellence? Is that the bottom?
How many times is it showing up?
Two.
Two.
Excellence is how much?
Yeah, excellence is two.
It's only two, what a people ratio, if it's only showed up twice, there are nine.
They're not.
Statements, then you don't want to have that one.
An ever-changing world, how many times I feel like I see it, one, two.
Evolving and ever-changing, do we use both? No?
Yeah, I'd say there's seven, no.
It's an evolving world, but ever-changing, do they sound? Well, but can you just put them as a concept?
Right, it's a, it's a theme.
The theme. Um, Kim, do you, I feel like you're struggling with something, so this would be a good time to reach.
I'm just struggling with the pace, quite honestly, um.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're almost there, I think what we're doing is pulling out themes.
I get it, but like, I still have. There are words in my mind that still need to be in that list and there are, and we are the. We were given the task of looking at the bullet points and fixing one of these. And I, yeah, I don't know, I just.
So let's take two steps back.
Going, going to flow.
Let's just take two steps back and. Identify what we think our goal is tonight, so we can walk out not feeling frustrated, but like we moved the ball forward. So I think the goal is to get some early feedback. From the board around key themes that are important and. Key themes, so, um. I think that's, that would be success if we walked out with some kind of key themes, keywords. I think the second thing that would be success is that we actually decide if our vision is about the student. Or the impact. Cause I, I still feel like there's a tad bit of a disconnect, a lot of us are talking about students. I think, Kim, you've identified, and maybe others, Jenna, that. What is, what is our vision going to be? Is it going to be about? What we want our students to become? Or?
The district to become?
The district to become. Well, that's not what we're saying up there.
I would, I would say from, we all independently gave our thoughts around a, a statement. Seventy, eighty percent of them had the word student in it, and I think that in itself tells us that. The majority want the vision to have a center around students.
Yeah.
So now comes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no absolute truth to any of this, so there's always going to be disparity. But, I mean, if the majority are saying student and empowering, those are themes.
So if we, I think with that being said, then if we could just stay focused on our goals, so let's look at those. Figure out what keywords or themes punch through. Uh, based on what's happening.
Yeah.
So what else, Dr. Roberts? The ever-changing world, evolving world, do we want to count that as a theme or not?
Three. That is.
And people want to look at the action words, like transform, transcend, use thrive.
I thought I saw global more than two times, but I don't. Um, I'm looking for the third one.
A global impact. If you want to go up and I'm going to help you.
I think I might be too short for that.
Also on number seven.
Uh, technically mine, which isn't up there, has global.
Empowering, it's not started, it only had one word.
I, I think global.
Global.
Yeah, that's the word I care about, I guess. What is the second, so empowering seems to be a highly used word. What is, what are the next words that are most popular, like is it? Concent, transcending?
Transform is.
Excellence.
Transform, transcend, one, two.
Excellence, two.
Is that what you're saying, Maria?
Oh no, but we don't want more than two, right? Excellence is there. Two.
Yeah, there's only two.
Transform.
I'd just like to say that I like this work session with, um, the whiteboard, I think it. It, it feels like you're in school again.
So how about Dr. Roberts, based on this, those key words? Um. Are there, are board members, are there words that are not showing up here? That you? Want to? Call to our attention? That just didn't show.
Do we want to add?
On maybe how the directions came or feeling landlocked within words that were. The activity.
Not a process point to offer, ideally, a vision statement should not be more than ten.
Correct.
Ten words, a mission statement should be twenty-six or less. Just wanting to look though.
I know this is not quite the goal right now, but just looking at those words and like the themes, um, that have risen. I, I, I think we could probably build something out of that, even if it's a graph, but empowering students for in. Empowering students for an ever-changing, empowering students to be excellent in an ever-changing global world. Is, i- it's, it's a summarization of the themes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's just, I mean.
And that's the next step, okay.
So it is there is like, we have general, I just want to make sure we give people the opportunity to say, even though it didn't show up there with the numbers, is there a? Word or phrase?
Yeah.
You just. Really want to make sure.
From the words that we chose? Like Skylar did? Or how do you?
Go on the right side, go on the left side.
Okay.
Is there something that is not being called out as a theme that you feel is so important that you want to just say that out loud? Equity, diversity, inclusion, um. Culturally responsive, um. All students get you, like I just, you know.
Wouldn't that get your point, though? Wouldn't that get to the point of, isn't that, isn't that, uh, mission instead of, like, this is aspirational vision, that's how we. I feel like.
It's going towards talking about students, which is what I'm hearing, because I'm. The only one who wants it to be higher level.
But it could be a kind of on that boat with you, though, too.
Then I think. You know, the words that I put up there were about a larger, in my, in my opinion, a larger vision, but if we're going. To be talking more about students, then I would need to go back over there and add different words.
Okay, that, to me, that's the differentiator of the s- the school district, I mean, we're, we're not drafting a vision statement for the city of Des Moines or the state of Iowa. To me, that is, the, that is the culture of the district, it is students, that's why the teachers work in the district for the students. That's why the students are, I mean, it, it is, it's all, to me, it is centered around students. I, I do agree that I think there's merit and value in this nobility of wanting it to be bigger than students. But at its core, I, I think if this was a city council meeting, I, I may agree with that, that the goal could be Des Moines. But for a school district.
That's a good point.
I do think it's students.
I guess for me, the im- the. The implication is that if our students succeed in the way that we're pointing out. Therefore, the impact is to our community, I, I guess I don't know that I feel good to say that. That's the assumption I'm making, is that if we're going to, if we do that. We actually, our community, our world, our state succeeds. So that's the assumption I'm making, not saying that's, that's how I've been thinking about it. Our, our dis- wow.
Empowering students, impacting community. Something excellence, I quit chasing excellence, but that's a bad, that's a. But something like that where it's three. Two-word.
But again, I think.
Empowering students to.
Before we get to second words, I think we really, to me, it's a, we have a frame issue and I. Um, we've got to build consensus as a board. Because to Skylar's point, I think we are hearing more of an approach towards students. Than maybe where you're going, that doesn't mean it's. Maybe we haven't given enough of an opportunity to be built out, to see what a conference would look like. So how do we get past this? Because I think we have to decide that. And then. Go back to the. So. Right, so if this is going to be. Is the vision that the board wants to pursue one that is about? The student at the center, is that the right question? Um. That, is that the student that we want to raffle?
And then for us to also think about. The, the, the verb, the verb is critical in our vision statement, right? It's, it speaks to what does the organization, what is your organization committed to doing? In this case, ours that has the most numbered votes. Or recurrences is to empower. If you're feeling, if anyone here feels as if, ah, empower doesn't resonate, just share.
Just was going to look up the definition, because I just wanted to make sure.
Educational, it feels less like now talking about transforming education, so the, but I, I.
Yeah, although it's funny, because when you talk to business leaders right now, we talk to a lot of people, and you even mentioned the comment about graduation. Empowerment is that item, supporting you to pick your path.
Chase your dream.
Chase your dream and, and. I think that is empowerment, I'm trying to think of another word, equip, um.
Prepare. Prepare.
Prepare.
Empowerment is given agency to provide to someone. It's a belief in a person.
Give someone the authority or power to do something. Make someone stronger, more confident, especially controlling your life, like you're doing.
One of the things that I heard in our early discussion was, uh, this conversation that was focused more on, on the future. Right, I heard ever-changing world, we talked about. We are essentially preparing students for a future that we don't even know exists yet. That speaks to evolving, ever-changing, global. Global, see, global is three.
Dr. Roberts, I think we give this type of minutes.
Yes, I agree.
I think, again, two goals, one was, do we have general consensus on? Students at the center, I think Skylar's recommendation, based on the fact that. If people feel like they understood the directions, a majority of the statements are student-focused. Then we pick that path as a vision statement, meaning a student. And if. The board does not have any non-negotiable worlds, words that are not showing up here.
Yes.
And I think, you know, I think we do want to be cognizant of Kim's point, which is how is diversity represented in here? And it may be able to be represented within those words, but.
What about citizenship, global citizenship? That implies being. Um, culturally aware. Uh, culturally. Hmm.
Sounds very ambitious.
Inclusive, yeah.
It's like global citizen, if you, if you, if I'm understanding correctly, it's like, what does it mean to be a global citizen and the mission is the.
How do you get there?
Actions type of get.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there's a term that I see up there that I think, uh. Both center students, but also the plus like adults, the notion of learn. As an organization that built on teaching and learning.
Without saying lifelong learner, what would you say?
Empowering global learners.
Ah. Got it. So you're not saying students, there you go.
I, I think people naturally think of learner as a student, but we're also inclusive of adults. Because the whole world is to learners.
I like global learners. I think that, that implies a, an open-mindedness that.
More inclusive, more inclusive, yeah.
The one, the one, the one word that does show up that I, I question a little bit is transform. I know there's a lot of interest behind it, but. When I think of transform, I think of a, a, a power dynamic. And to be transformed, someone has to transform you as if they have the authority. Versus empowering, you essentially are taking control of that outcome.
But can I ask, I, what is the, I really appreciate that. Where in, we generally empowering global learners. What do we want them to do with this ever-changing world? Like.
To lead and transform with excellence.
What'd you just say?
To lead and transform with excellence.
But are we trying to trans, like, are we trying to survive in an ever-changing world? Are we trying to change the world?
Trying to transcend.
So we want to empower them to do something, but what are they trying to do in this ever-changing world? Survive?
Thrive.
Adapt, thrive?
Mm-hmm, thrive, yep.
I, I want to build on what Skylar shared in terms of use the word transform. If we use transform as it applies to students. Then that power dynamic exists because it appears as if we're doing something to someone. If you use transform in terms of the organization. It, it's much more likely to be received because we transform an entire organization. But if you're talking to transformative students, it appears as if we're doing something to them.
Uh, but I think that they, in the one mission statement that is on here, it's that their students will transform. The world, uh, that they're, that's an action, like they're, they're transformational because of.
They're on a mission to transform the world.
Yeah, not that we would transform students, that they're going to go out and.
Transform their community, the world at large. I mean.
Transformational scholars.
Uh, because I think that this is the type of activity that we can talk to depth and I feel like we need to. Get some themes.
So.
Go back.
Focus.
To the drawing board with professionals, because other, we could sit here all night and depict this and I.
Oh, I agree. I'm ju- I mean. Like, I mean, it took a year for the. The committee of eighty people to, that is deciding or re- making recommendations for the fate of the whole district. It took almost a year to come up with kind of common themes. And so I just want us to be very thoughtful about. Making sure that we are, we are not, we have not started from a blank slate tonight and we are putting time limits on things. And so just. Being thoughtful.
I, I really appreciate that and I'm actually going to push back a little bit because part of our goal has been. To deliver a vision to Dr. Roberts so that strategic planning can move forward. And we have listened, we have spent a long time as a board listening, bringing things together. And at some point, we can't hold up work. And so we can either dedicate time, and that means everybody has to change their schedules. And give one full day to have a thoughtful process, or we're going to have to do it this way.
And, and we're not starting with a blank slate. I agree with Jackie in that we've had input. We've all been getting input.
Okay, but tonight's process.
I know.
I'm starting from a blank slate. Um, how would you like to do it?
No, I.
No, 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 we gotta, we have to, we, we have to navigate through this as a board. So if you were in charge, how would you like to lead the conversation? So we feel, we need everybody's body. So how can we get your body? Please proceed, Dr. Roberts. Be quiet for a minute.
Next, thank you, Jeff. You've captured notes, solid brainstormed. Any final reactions to what the words that we've learned and then that can probably sort of form a theme for us? It seems as if we're feeling, most of us feeling good about students being a part of a vision statement.
And empowering.
Empowering being a part of a vision statement. I've heard global, but a while the community hasn't appeared often. Enough to be captured here. Community is one, two, only two. And here, I've heard a little bit of an appetite for community. Someone could put it on the table for a vote.
I just want to make another case for excellence before it totally goes away. Because now that we're talking about the listening sessions, I do feel like we've heard that a lot from our community.
Very common.
That they do want that. So whether it's here or somewhere else, I think that's a loud theme.
I heard there's a two expression. I guess, didn't you tell me two?
Yeah, so I didn't know if it made the cut or not because it doesn't have a number, but if we're going to be representative of what we heard, I do feel like that's one.
I have it up there.
That we heard a lot.
With two.
Yes, just twice. Three times.
I'm with you on excellence. I'm, I would love for excellence to be a part of.
I think that was your campaign slogan.
It's aspiration.
Patrick delivers for the people. So my takeaway is that I'm going to, first of all, send these notes back to the full board. So everybody has access to them to sit and ruminate with them. At the same time, um, once we have, uh, additional communication support. Which ideally starts next week, we will engage them in conversation.
Yep.
Um, at the same time, people take a week, like, think about the process, think about how it went, think about where it feels like maybe it. Did or didn't meet our expectations and determine if we feel like this had enough. Consensus-based feedback for us to keep going or to take one step back and start again.
Feeling good, Dilly?
Uh, I want to take photos of all this stuff just so we have it for. Uh, we're going to go in touchy-feely way. We're going to go around the room and I just want to see thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs this way. How did tonight feel for people? Marisa's thumbs up. Anna, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs this way. You got it up.
Them up.
The big bell.
Skylar? Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
And. Okay. All right. Okay, last thing we have to figure out, team, is we have to convene for fifteen minutes, at least four of us. Um, next week and, um, I need to keep in mind different obligations on Tuesday. Um, what do people's calendars? Um.
I turned fifty on Tuesday, so that's.
Right.
I'll be at a board meeting if you want me to.
No, I don't. I'm just wondering if there's any existing obligations. Okay. So let me get back to all of you. It will be fifteen minutes. We need four people. I believe that the three things on the agenda potentially are, uh, strategic communications, personnel. And, uh, potentially, uh, parents square.
So it's a consent agenda.
Correct, it would be a consent agenda. So we only need four. So just bear with me as I check one particular thing about Tuesday available. And I will come back to all of you quickly.
And virtually, yes.
All virtual.
Oh, okay.
Themes works on your phone.
Yeah.
Right, or, yeah, during the day.
Oh, yeah.
That is a question.
I guess we could do that. We could do it in the middle of the day.
Okay.
Much time.
Everyone's on their job. Let's just.
I have an auditor coming.
That would be fine if you were available. Let's just check for kicks next Tuesday at noon, just, or around noon.
I'm in.
Yeah, that works.
I'm open.
What is that day?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Love that Patrick was willing to come to a board meeting on his third. Jackie, it's with every treat.
I would not be here, so.
I mean, the funny thing though is if you only knew that the fact that John and Sam Norris actually have a plan is slightly.
No, you can't blow up.
Um.
From your board.
I cannot be there. Uh, Madam Vice Chair, can you lead the meeting? Okay, so do we have four? We have one.
Is there a better sign?
Uh, it, I don't need, Marina, yep, one, two.
You can be there.
Three, four, five. So how about? Yep, next Tuesday. Hey, can you do that, Dr.?
I'll make it happen.
I get, I mean, I guess a parent square was such a contentious concern. I feel like. All board members should be present to either approve or, I mean, that there was a reason why it got tabled twice. I don't feel like we should have people absent for that vote. I mean.
I could all be there.
Uh, can we start at twelve thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
Can't do twelve thirty.
Use Catherine.
Then we do prior?
But I, I do not need to be there, particularly for the parent square conversation. Um. I'd like to.
I'm, I'm reaching at the people that have tabled it. I think that, yeah, it's probably true.
I was going to vote for it yesterday night, so I, I don't need to be there.
Yeah, okay, let's, um, let me come back to the drawing board, three times, okay?
So, but sometime between, around the middle of the day.
On Tuesday, right? We're shooting for Tuesday.
Yes.
Let's just say it's for Tuesday. And I think to your point, Kim, let me get with Dr. Roberts to actually understand what a potential outcome is. To then understand where we're going. Fair, fair point.
Yeah.
Okay, we want to close out this work session. Uh. Rosie, any other things we need to do to close this out?
Nope, we're good to go.
Uh, if you were watching, we thank you for the flexibility or if this is recording, I just want to call that. The reason we moved it was because of a potential gas leak. So thank you for your patience. Bye, Anna.
Adios, Anna.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No public policy.
I thought we were going to go around and say something nice about each other.
I mean, Jenna was.
That has ready.
Quick update about the gas. So, um, there's some construction taking place over there and what we saw and.